So it is six thirty-nine on Tuesday, uh, November sixth, two thousand eighteen. And we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, we have a single agenda for this item. This is in fact, uh, what we call a workshop. Um, we had come up with the school committee operational goals or school committee goals, um, last week. Two weeks ago. And this meeting was scheduled for us to be able to, actually, last week. This meeting was scheduled for us to be able to continue that conversation and for each one of these goals, uh, to create specific, um, actions and then, uh, measurements for those actions. So we can start measuring ourselves against, against these goals. Uh, we had, just as a reminder, since, um, this is an off-cycle meeting and the, we don't have computers for every member. We had three categories under which we decided to have a, a total of six goals. The first area is operational goals. School committee will have a well-established training or an orientation process for new members. Number two is school committee will have a manual that documents operational procedures and protocols, as well as roles and responsibilities of the committee and its members. The second section is fiscal management related. Uh, the first one in that section says, "School committee will have a clear process to document and publish its annual budget online for public accessibility." And, uh, the second one says, "School committee will assist in the development of a needs-based budget in collaboration with the leadership team." The third section is related to community, community relations. The first one, uh, is, "The school committee will create and maintain a public relations plan for the school district." And the second one is, "The school committee will work cooperatively, communicate clearly and effectively, and commit to improving relationships with other branches of municipal government." Good?
Can you email that to me?
Yeah.
Please?
Sure. Does everybody want, want this emailed?
Oh my god, I can see it on my phone.
I can't pull it up on my phone.
Okay. Nobody else wants it, right? You're good?
I got it.
Pardon me? Okay. I sent it.
On, on the, the, um, school email, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, what we will try to do, for each one of these goals, we'll s- uh, we will decide what, whether you wanna call it objectives or actions, we can, um, come up with. And then for each one of those, we're gonna have, we're gonna need two more tags. One is, uh, what is the timeline for the action? And number two, uh, how are we going to measure whether or not we are, we are on the right track to achieve that goal? The, luckily, I guess, the first section and the last section already have some things that we talked about, especially the first section, operational goals, um, related to establishing, uh, training and orientation process for new members. We started talking about that yesterday. Uh, the second one is, "School committee will have a manual that documents operational procedures and protocols." Maybe we did not get as deep as that yesterday, but we have a lot of that, uh, in the, uh, document that, uh, Deanne created and shared with us. So I will capture our notes then, in, on this document, same document. So let's start with the question. For the first one, "School committee will have a well-established training and orientation process for new members. What are some of the actions that we need to take to get there?" Actually, I don't wanna do this.
So I thought, based on last night's conversation, that I was gonna take the document that, that Deanne put together and turn that into a, a little bit of a checklist.
Okay.
For, for somebody who's newly elected to go through and make sure that they, they get all the, you know, all the key points after they get elected.
So my understanding is that we're going to create a checklist to go on top of that document.
Right.
But it's a fif- fifteen, twenty-page document. I don't think we can turn that into a checklist entirely, right?
Right, but I thought I was gonna create the checklist on top of that. And then from that, that would, that would kind of be the, the new, or that new orientation.
No, I, no, the, the checklist is gonna, is gonna operate as, um, just a document that a new member can use to, say, for instance, the charting the course, right? And, um, a timeline for that. And what are some of the other things that we know? Um, the town clerk, right? There's, there's the ethics online.
Yep, I haven't done that either.
You, you're supposed to do that within, I don't know, thirty days or something like that. So just the initial items that need to be taken care of right away is, is what I understood to be on the checklist.
Okay.
And then this handbook is going to be something that's handed to each member and the expectation is that, you know, you're gonna use that as your guide for especially, you know, the first year as you're learning the language and the procedures and... Because I agree with Emery, a checklist, um, off of this is not, is only just gonna be a snapshot of what this handbook is designed to provide.
So is the handbook supposed to take the place of an orientation?
No.
It's supposed, what we're, what we're also saying, yeah. It's like a document and then sort of like living actions. For example, meet with, you know, Chris Martin, you know? Have a tour of the schools. Is that what we're, right?
Yes, right.
And then the measurement is met one-on-one, or had a phone call, or however we wanna measure, where, measure it. And then we, we establish, how soon should this happen? Should this happen within your first thirty days? Should this happen within your first six months? And then is this, and is the owner sort of the person who's helping that person do those things, or is that person doing it themselves? I think that's my, um, look.
Pretty much.
So one thing though is, um, so how often are there new members? Cause the, uh, aren't the, we're in two, two sections of three-year terms, no? And then you have a one-year term this time, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any consist, consistent, no.
It, it, it almost feels like every year, one of us is up.
Okay.
Cause I'm up in, I'm up in May of this year.
Yep.
And I just happened to be up in May because I extended for one year.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I would've been, right?
Okay.
So I think, the short answer is, just about every year, there's, there's gonna be.
There's a potential for.
There's a potential for somebody new coming in.
And at any time, I mean.
Yeah.
People have resigned.
Right.
Right.
You know, midterm, and then you have to appoint someone. That's how I, I'm here.
So i- is it fair to say that, "School committee will have a well-established training and orientation process for new members"? Um, one of them probably will be us saying whatever we already have. So that document is gonna be part of that, but I don't think that document by itself fulfills this, this goal. So we're gonna have to come up with something else. Does that document do the training part that we're talking about here? We'll have a well-established training process?
No, the handbook that, that I put together is just that. It's a handbook that new members can use just to understand the budget process, for instance, or what happens when we go into executive session. What are the rules and the guidelines around that?
That's number two. You, like, you're, what you created, in my eyes, fulfills the operational goal number two.
Yeah, it's like, duh, one and done, sort of, like that's.
Operational procedures, protocols, rules.
And you did the protocols, so that's, I feel like that's done, like, I don't, even the action.
Well, I mean, we're still, I mean, it's still in a draft form, so it's not actually done.
Right, but no, but I mean, like, the, 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 the obje- the, yeah.
The first part, the, the training and orientation, and what I thought Mike's piece of it, the checklist, was going to go kind of on top of the handbook as a quick snapshot of when you get elected, you know, immediately, here's what you need to do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you, you have to think about taking and charting the course. You have to do the ethics course. You're gonna have to meet with the superintendent and the, you know, you'll be assigned a mentor and, um, you know.
So, the handbook, though, is the, I guess I'm getting myself confused. I thought the handbook was the number-two part. So Emery's saying, "Create a handbook that new members can use," but isn't that what we just came up with to fulfill number two?
Yeah, I agree. I agree that the handbook makes more sense in the second part, and the first part is what we're talking about now, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think the action, the, and the other part that I'm, um, I just, I don't.
So here's, here's how I'm thinking. Both parts will need some documents. Uh, the, the, yesterday, I think, uh, you guys said, and rightfully so, that if we have this long, complicated document that we throw in front of somebody who's new to the committee, that person would not really get much out of it, which I believe is the second one. A lot of operational procedures and protocols may or may not be helpful for a new member. So the first one, I called it handbook, but it may be an orientation handbook, or, I don't know, a quick manual that also includes a checklist and all that stuff. It is specifically for a new member to use. That's what I had in mind. And I'm not saying that the second item will not have a similar document that is a little more detailed and, uh, and, and, uh, mature, because, you know, people who are in the committee will have to know more about some of those procedures and protocols. And if you don't agree, feel free to disagree, that's okay too.
So instead of a handbook, you're, what you're thinking of is like a Quick Start Guide?
The what?
The Quick Start Guide.
Alright.
Thinking about a new piece of tech- technology that you get, you get the big thing that you have to go do when things are going bad. A Quick Start Guide, yeah. It's just a real, quick and easy, what do we do with these meetings? You know, what do I, who do I call for this? That kinda stuff.
Okay. I called it an orientation guide, only because, you know, we have something and I'm trying to see how we fit it there, obviously. But if you wanna call it quick, you collectively want to call it something else, Quick Start or something else, that's why.
Alright, well, that, that's, that's where I think, um, we need to define clearly what is in the first goal and what is, what is in the first statement, what is in the second statement. Cause when I think of the first statement, "School committee will have a well-established training and orientation process," I think of it as just that. It's not, it's not a handbook, it's not a guide, it's, it's, it's basically for the superintendent and the school committee to understand, when a new member comes on board, here's what we do.
Mm-hmm.
We make sure that this person, um, you know, spends four hours in the school district, meeting the principals and understanding the processes around, um, you know, how, how the, the chair works with the superintendent, how the committee members, you know, that sort of thing. You know, when I think of orientation, I think of that more face-to-face time. So creating that process, when a new member comes in, what are we doing with this new member? We're assigning a mentor, we're, we're sitting down with this new member.
So what is, what is the process that will include all those steps that you're talking about? Cause we're not gonna write, you know, we're gonna assign a mentor, we're gonna do that. That's, that's gonna be part of a process document. So we're gonna create a process document, is that what we're saying?
That's what I, that's what I was thinking. I, that's what I was thinking. So that way, when we're no longer on the committee, five years from now, right, the, the, whoever is the chair, whoever the, the members, whoever the new superintendent is, is gonna be able to go to, you know, whether it's a folder in the, in the computer or a file cabinet, and be able to pull out the, uh, you know, training and orientation process for new school committee members. And just follow step by step what needs to be done for new school committee members. And, oh, by the way, uh, in addition to that, be able to hand out the handbook and the checklist. So there's a full process in place, and, and, you know, cause we, none of us have this, right, Emery? I mean.
No.
When we came in, I, I was just thrown into the school committee, it was just learn as you go.
Yeah, I just knew everything.
Yeah, okay. Well, go with that.
Well, I'm certain, I, that's.
That's how we were all thrown into this.
Yeah.
You're, you're.
Not alone.
Not alone in that at all. So, it's, the way I'm thinking of it is, when we're all not here, we, everybody knows exactly what's gonna happen, because all they have to do is, is go to this, this processing document.
Yeah. I agree. So create a, create an orientation process for new members? Is that what we wanna say for that first item? What would that include? At least a few examples that we can throw. For instance, Mike mentioned the, uh, the checklist. Um, what else?
Um, people to meet. Right, would that be in a checklist, a snapes, list of names of people that they should be introduced to?
Okay. Okay, what else?
I think a list of the mandatory, uh, classes that need to be taken. Right, like, there's the ethics. There's a few classes that have to be taken.
Mm-hmm. It's just the online ethics, which takes what, thirty minutes, forty, forty-five minutes online?
There's that, and then there's the charting of the course.
And charting the course, which is one eight-hour day. Well, they say eight hours, but mine didn't last eight hours.
Alright, so checklist, list of people to meet in the district, list of mandatory trainings, um, I don't mean need to say, to be taken, obviously. What should be part of that orientation process?
Well, I th- I mean, is, is it, is it reasonable to think spending maybe four hours, a half a day with the superintendent and the chair of the committee?
Depends upon when you come in, because you may not, well, yeah, cause it was decided the first time.
Right. That, I mean, that would really be in the process if it's part of it. I, even now, we're adding a little meet, but if you wanna include it there. So I, in other words, that's not really, that's not necessarily a goal. It's not necessarily an action that we need to specify here. But, uh, if it should be part of the, part of the, whatever document we're gonna call this. Or, so isn't there, is, should there be an orientation, I mean, truly, uh, with the superintendent and some mentor? Is that what we're saying?
Well, that's, I think that's, that is part of, you know, in, in order to get to these operational goals, aren't we trying to decide what this all means? You know, do, do we assign a mentor? Do we, do we have them sit down with the superintendent and the chair? You know, what, what is this all gonna look like?
Well, that's what the process document will include. That's why I'm saying, if we start writing those, then we're gonna, we're creating the document itself. So, we, we stay at a high level when we say, "Action," say, "Create a process document," and the process document will have all those things, hopefully. That's what I'm saying. We don't have to really write everything that should be in the process document now. Cause it's gonna be a while.
What do you mean, it's gonna be a while?
Well, we, you know, we're gonna have to think about it, and we're gonna have to spend some time about it, and that's only the first item and the first section.
Kinda feels like whatever we touch, we're.
It makes, becomes more work and.
Well, because we're starting from scratch.
Yeah.
You know, with, with, no matter what process we touch, there is no process. We are creating the process.
Well, um, just ensuring that, um, email address and, um, your access to the, the shared stuff is, is there.
Yeah, I completely agree, but for instance, I wanted to include something like that in the document that you created. It does, we don't have to specify on all that. We can, I mean, I, I can just.
Well, no, I mean, just, just a quick line on this, like, you, you'll include any IT, um, requirement. And then when we get into the, the process document itself, then we'll scroll in a little bit more in depth.
Okay.
What do you have so far?
A lot. Checklist, assigning of a mentor, orientation meeting with the superintendent and admin team, list of people to meet in the district, list of mandatory trainings, school email and access, and other access. And measurement is process document, process created and documented. By when can we do, should we have this document created? End of year?
Yeah, by the end of the school year.
And which year?
This year.
By the end of December.
By the end of December?
Uh, it's, end of December.
Oh, I don't know that.
Okay, end of January, February, March?
Well, that's like, I just feel, for me personally, assigning something that's gonna take that much time going into the time of year with additional meetings and everything, that just seems a little bit too, too daunting.
How about by the end of March? Cause then we get into the budget. Is that too far out? Too close?
I, I.
Okay, who will take ownership?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually thinking that maybe we take bits and pieces of this individually, and that way you can work at it. Just the way I did with the handbook, to be honest with you, it was just so much easier for me to do it.
Just do it rather than have to.
Yes, and then bring it to the committee.
End of March, Deanne? Is it you?
End of March.
I'm doing the checklist.
So.
There's gonna be multiple people.
Yeah. She's doing the, you're doing the handbook itself, but.
Anybody else?
Do you want, do we, do we blah blah blah? Want me to speak? Want me to come up with a list of people to meet? Is that how we're doing it? Or, sorry, am I misunderstanding?
It's, it's a complete misunderstanding.
No, I think it's, I think it's in, in its totality. Wh- when, when can we come up with? End of February feels, end of March seems like we're, we're already too far into the budget. So it kinda feels like, uh, between now and the end of February.
Okay.
That's good.
Uh, checklist. So what is it, what, what is the piece you're gonna be working on, Deanne?
Um, I didn't, I didn't say anything.
Okay.
I didn't offer anything up.
Alright.
Because like you said, I'm still trying to stay at the higher level.
Yep.
And then, as we get to the next phase of this, then maybe we can start talking about who's doing what. Getting it all on paper and then see where we're at.
Okay. Alright, so, we'll, still, based on what you have already done and researched, we'll just, your name is on top of it. Probably most of the work will come from your document or whatever else you're gonna be adding to it anyway. This is not the last shot at this. We, we have to read it one more time before we say that, it's a go, anyway. So I'm just trying to, given, what time is it? Given that Jen has to leave in fifteen minutes. I just wanna squeeze a couple more things in here.
I apologize, my husband got stuck at work.
No, that's, that's, that's okay. Uh, you're gonna be, your name will be in the owner column a lot after you leave, so.
Fine. I can't guarantee that, that it's gonna happen.
Are we good with that one?
I think so.
Okay, so the second one was, "Create a list of trainings" that I put in there, but I guess we don't need that anymore?
No, cause it's already in the one above, right, so.
Yep.
Do we need two goals for, for, or two?
Because this objective is multiple parts. Can it just be like the one part that's, because I feel like if you, some of it starts to become, you could say, each one of these individual things is a part of.
Pretty much. That's what we did anyway, on the owner side, you're right.
You know?
Yeah, I was kinda thinking, like, uh, "School committee will have a well-established training and orientation process for new members, including documents, including operational document, or how, however we say it, um, including operational procedural documents and protocols, as well as roles and responsibilities of the committee and its members." Kinda feels like, we're, we're getting tripped up in the fact that there's two separate things here. And it, and it feels like we can.
I thought there was.
We can, we can merge it together.
Then, going back to what, and it's all good, but going back to the conversation yesterday, will that document feel too complicated for someone who's just jumping in?
So I. That's not what I'm saying, though. What I'm suggesting is, it's going to include everything. It's gonna include the training and orientation process as well as the handbook.
I, I.
The checklist.
Agree and understand what you're saying. So combine the two statements and.
Okay. I mean, I, it, it doesn't make any difference to me whether we call them two separate documents, or create them separately, put them in one package. That's all good. So you wanna change the, you wanna, uh, roll it into one?
Well, yeah, but I think the question is, if we roll it into one goal, do we then need to have a secondary goal underneath the operational piece? You know, like, it seems like that one operational goal is pretty meaty, then we combine it, that, that, with all the objectives and underneath, that it's still accomplishing the same thing, unless, instead of having it be two separate overlapping statements, right?
Right.
Right?
So, so that first action is, the way it's written right now is completely related to a new member. For orientation, assigning mentor and all that stuff. If we take parts of this, and we don't have to stay that way, but let's just see if I can get close to what Deanne was saying. Including this, right?
So what you're saying is, you're seeing the first one more to support new committee members.
Yes.
And the second one more to support school committee as a whole.
Yes.
And I was seeing it as, it's all one and the same. Whether you're a new committee member, or you're a committee member, the, the.
The process and procedure should be.
Exactly, it's all the same.
Except for, for, I think the only distinction might be for somebody who's new, rather than try to go through that whole document, which I think is only getting bigger as we talk about it, the one that you're creating. Pull out just a few key things that they would need to kind of figure out quickly, uh, before their first meeting, or within their first couple of meetings.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that the handbook gets any bigger. I'm, what I presented is, is, that was, the, the hope was that it was gonna remain seventeen pages.
Yeah, I think, I think there's been a request for a few, a few things added, which might bring it into like an eighteen page or something like that.
Or eighteen pages.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to say it's gonna get a hundred pages, I just meant it was gonna be this side, plus maybe a couple more pages.
Yeah, I, I think Emery's thinking of like, a little like, half sheet folded in half. This is the things you're gonna do to get started, these are the. This is the things you're gonna do to get started, these are the people you should meet with, this is who you're gonna contact with questions, and this is the people you need, these are the classes you need, boom, that's just for you, brand new person.
Right.
And then we all have that other big sort of.
And it's all, it's all part of the larger protocol and processes.
Right.
That make up how a school committee runs.
Right, so what Emery's doing, I I think is just doing one goal for, so that we can satisfy that new committee member thing that we've been talking about, and then also putting in a place the sort of living document that we'll all use as reference source.
I think you need to create the second before you can create the first. That's kind of. You create the big document and then from that you pull out the present pieces that you would want.
It's pretty easy. You know.
But I'm not, but if I were.
Oh, yeah, the big checklist, yes.
I would just wait until that document was completed and say, well, these are the mandatory trainings, you just pull it directly into that document.
So whether or not this is a combined one, there has to be a second action then.
No, I, that's fine, I understand now. I understand that the first one was more related to a new committee member and the second is more related to the school committee as a whole. And if we wanna keep it that way, that's fine, now now it feels more differentiated in my mind.
Okay, so keep it the way it was?
Yep.
The only thing to do now is in actions, you have to take away, create a handbook that the new members can use. It'd be for all members, right?
No, I think we rolled back, right, just it is for new members?
Yeah, I think he's talking about in the second. Number two.
It's only bec-.
He copied and pasted.
I copied and pasted.
I can barely see this anyway, so.
Oh gosh, I can hold this up if.
No. I can blow it up, I think it's weird.
Will yours rotate screen like?
Yeah, it it does that one.
Okay, so what else do we need in the first one? We just put a big action there with a lot of owners, is that good enough or do we need anything else?
I think it's good enough for now, move on to the second one.
Alright. Okay, second one, school committee will have a manual that documents operational procedures and protocols as well as roles and uh responsibilities of the committee and its members. What would be an action? Or actions for this?
Wouldn't that be create a handbook?
Yep, so it's just create a school committee handbook is the first one.
And that seems like we should be able to have that done by.
We're revisiting it next week, two weeks, the nineteenth?
Yeah, but I I don't see, it's not, it won't be completed on the, by the nineteenth meeting.
What if we say end of year?
We could probably do by the end of December.
I would say the end of December, whenever that whenever that meeting is.
Okay. Is there an owner, again, multiple owners or is it Deanne's?
I think we're all gonna have.
Well, I think every, yeah, I think everybody's gonna. Does it need to have one owner or?
Yeah, well, it doesn't mean you do everything, that's that's what, that's not what I mean by owner, it's just you basically are overseeing that creation of the document, since you already started, so I'll just put your name.
That's fine.
What else do we need? I know that we just said create a school committee handbook, which almost mimics the goal itself, but what else do we need other than a handbook?
We had that protocol sheet that she created that we just needed to vote on and approve.
The agreement, the protocol agreement?
That's what it's called, right, yeah.
That would probably be ready next time, right?
Well.
Or end of, end of December?
Yeah, it seems like it's complete now, but um yeah, just put the same timeframe.
It's okay if we finish early though, so.
Right. Very successfully so. What else do we need for this section? What else, I mean, we say, we said we're gonna have a manual, which narrowed our goal a little too much maybe, but if we go with that manual, creating a handbook and creating a protocol, what else would we need for for this goal?
I, to me, it seems pretty complete.
Everybody agrees?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, fiscal management goals. The first one is school committee will have a clear process to document and publish its annual budget online for public accessibility. It almost sounds like we wrote the goals in such a way that it kind of stands out as if it's the action by itself, but um, I'm guessing Mommy has some things to add.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, maybe the, maybe the goal is just the school committee will document and publish its annual budget online for public accessibility. And the action item in there is the process.
And documentation. That's good, I like that.
Which, whatever you're saying.
Uh, so if you were to just cut, um have a clear process to document and publish, if you can take that piece out, then we have a goal.
This?
Yeah. Now we have a goal and then what you just cut is really the actions, the two actions.
Create a document.
And then a process for publishing.
And then the doc timeframe for the publishing is based upon our deadlines that we have set for. Right, oh, that's that's part of it within the action, not an actual timeline.
Yes, so in other words, school committee will publish its annual budget online for public accessibility. Accessibility is the goal. And the action is clear, uh, um, create create timeline document or budget, however you wanna word it, create the document.
And then create the process to publish it.
Create the document, the timeline, the process for the budget.
So I think, so that last piece, as I read this, it doesn't talk about needing the document or process, I think we should, but does that mean we didn't, we need another goal to specifically say this is our process and this is where we house the process?
Well, the goal.
Really, this goal only says we just have to put the budget online.
Well, we did create the timeline last year.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we don't need to document the process and share that, I I think we do. But the goal here itself, as it's written now, doesn't talk about that need, it just says the goal is to get our budget posted online. So the question is, do we need another goal in there to say to document the process or or create a process?
Or just change the wording again, because I think it's all part of it, like the, when we're saying document, we're referring to the the process, that's what we want to document.
I think we also, is this also, or is this too too detailed, we still need, we need to establish an online presence for this. We don't even have a a place to put it, we're just saying put it online, but are we? Are we gonna first set, establish uh a budgeting website, a piece of our? Or is that, or is that part of the process?
No, I, that's, that's the third one.
We probably are.
I don't know what the first and second is. So we we said school committee will document and publish its annual budget for public accessibility. Okay. Is that how we say it, for our public access or whatever? But what are, what are some of the actions that underlie this goal? There, it seems like there is a documentation piece, there is a publishing piece, and then there's a making sure that public has access to it piece. Alright, so I think the third one, at least partially, it's not, it can't be the whole thing. Establishing an online presence for access to documents, that's what we need to do. We do have a location, but we don't put everything in there, so we have to do that. Um, it, do, do we only want online presence? Because yesterday, a couple of you mentioned that there are some folks who don't really have any online presence.
Well, we were saying that was for the community relations piece to get out to those beyond the school, school district, but I mean, I don't know that. I think the online presence is, I mean, that's what we.
Yeah, I mean, if we're just a stop, we're just establishing a website that is accessible through any library, most people have smartphones. Um, so it's out there, um, I.
So what I had in mind for something like this was similar to what Adam uh talked to us about. That there would be a new document with more narrative and uh not just a spreadsheet full of numbers that we keep on publishing. So I just wanted to really get us, push us towards that goal uh by using this.
So we need to.
He's gonna be involved anyway, hmm?
We need to create a narrative.
Yeah.
Um of of how budget is developed. Is that how far you wanna?
How every year's specific budget is developed, is that what you're saying, or overall?
Just the overall education, the process of how it works.
That's what I covered.
Okay. So that could, that can be one of the things, I guess, create a document that uh explains the budget creation process?
Be kind when you're assigning me things.
So Jen's gonna create a document that explains the budget process.
See you, Jen.
Bye.
Bye.
No worries. Create a document that explains the budget creation process, okay, so we have that, let's say, what? Should we create a template? I mean, Adam probably will do that, that focuses on visuals and narrative?
Yeah.
So there's the step where we're gonna create the document that explains how the budget process works. And then there's the actual budget for the year, which has the narrative, right, is that, is that what we're talking about now?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
This actually, you guys added and I like that, I did not even think about this, that people may want to even people may want to understand how that budget is being put together. Because every year we're talking about net school spending and chapter forty and you know, town's contribution and everything else, and I, I don't think most people really understand exactly how those things, those pieces come together.
That seems like the, the element that that we don't have yet.
Right, so that's.
The the timeline Cheryl created and was, was already submitted to, for the bylaws, right? And then Adam said that he was also creating a template for, for the budget in a, in a, in a, in a more user-friendly way already, he was working on that. So the third piece is the actual budgeting process itself from a higher level.
That piece, I think, is the piece we need to do more than just post online. That piece, I think we need to figure out ways to get in front of, people, put it in places like town hall, I know, print it out and put it, put it in places like town hall or.
Yep. I think, I think this is also an opportunity where we, we can align um one of these goals with the community relations goal. Where, um the subcommittee for the budget partners with the community relations subcommittee and establishes a full marketing plan on how, an outreach plan to the public on where their money is being spent, there seems to be a lot of concern about that online.
A lot of perceived.
Of waste, which is.
And the fact like people don't fully take the, well, they don't seem to understand how to look inside of it. Therefore, there's a lot of room for concern and finger pointing when the numbers are a lot different than they thought.
Right.
So if we created something that just explained how we did it.
Yeah.
And where the numbers come from, that would at least give some insight to that piece.
Okay, so what would be that action?
Create a document that explains how the budget is put together.
Okay, so we're good with that, that's number one. Um create a template that includes visuals and narrative for annual budget, that's, you know, that's for ease of use, which is outside the first one. But Adam's gonna be doing a good chunk of that, so.
That's the annual piece of the budget itself, right now, walked away from how, it's just outside and now we're talking about this year's budget or next year's budget.
Yeah, Adam may have, may be working on that, but that's not something that we would be able to do without him anyway.
Right, so I put Adam, Mike and Emery, because that's the budget uh and finance subcommittee, we'll work with them, we'll bring it to the full committee for.
And as far as, it seems to me like, um, the school committee's responsibility is to make it accessible. It's not necessarily our responsibility to make sure that every resident in town has this in their hands.
Well, I I get that, but.
Because, to be honest, that's pretty overwhelming.
Yeah, but if we just committed to putting it in like town hall or something or the, or the library and those that want it can have it, we can say, hey, this is where it is and then that's it, I'm not saying we mail it out to everybody or or walk knock and say, here you go. But I think we do ourselves a little bit more of a service just by putting a couple of locations that aren't online for those people that don't really have the internet a lot.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's a good idea, is maybe putting it in the town hall, putting it at, um you know, where the select board meet, maybe where FinCom meets, you know, even giving them copies of it and maybe also providing an online link from not only from the school committee, wherever it's gonna be going on the school site, but also the town site.
I didn't mean to say we were gonna make sure that everybody gets a copy, I just wanted to make sure that it was available for those that really wanted to, to make their voices heard.
Yeah.
There it is.
Right.
I had so much. Um, I had something in mind, but, okay. This is too gimmicky, but number of users. Number of site users. So two things? Alright. What is the, what else?
I think that's pretty good.
But we, uh, how about measurements for create, this creating the document will be fine, document that explains budget creation process?
Yep.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to see us hit the goals, so I'm trying to, you know, uh, keep in mind that we don't wanna, we don't wanna create too mu- too many action steps or.
Okay, so what would be a timeline for that document that explains the budget creation process?
Uh, I'd say, I'd be in the February.
Would that be too late or, good, I'm just asking.
I think, um, I mean, I could I'd like to take a, a hand in that one and I'm sure you probably got, you know, my name, your name and Adam's name on that one. But if if the information was there, I could probably get it done earlier, but I've.
Okay, so how about we call it Mike with Emery and Adam? So you take primary role on that, okay. Um, how do we measure the, create a template that includes visuals and narrative for annual budget? I think Adam, Adam's objective is to have something similar to that for FY twenty, which is the upcoming budget.
Yeah, that one, I think, is gonna be tough, because it it depends, like, the the narrative depends on what the actual budget needs are, right?
Right.
It's gonna change, so we won't really know that until the development of the budget. At least I would think.
This will, this this will need to be ready to go before February, I would think. End of January, maybe?
End of January.
Do we have enough information in January to start understanding where the issues may be, right?
Yep. So how about the site? I think that site can be created fairly quickly.
We're just looking for like another tab on the.
Yeah.
So end of year, just to.
Yeah, it's really just a place for those documents that you're creating to to live.
Who's got access to the?
Cheryl.
It's just Cheryl?
Yeah, Cheryl and David are the only two that have the rights to edit that. The, yeah, the website.
Okay. Well, good, anything else you can think about?
Um, I mean, if they're comfortable with me sharing, I'm happy to provide any help that they want for the website stuff, and I wanna do that.
So it's Cheryl, Dave, uh with Jen. So one thing that I I I talked about a couple of times, a little um tangential, but related to this. I see, I saw some towns that had a volunteer board. So there are some wa- small mo- uh pieces of work in the school district, and then you go and sign up for it. And, you know, you say, I can do it, I have the skills, I have the time, I have whatever. Uh, so I I remember some folks coming to a couple of meetings, and they mentioned that they are uh technology professionals, they do, you know, systems, they do development, this and that. Why not really engage them in the school district to do some work? I think the the concern and fear always has been, and this is true for the town's website as well, because we had a lot of conversations on that site. And I think I was on the, on the committee. What type of access will people have if they are working to help uh with the content? And there's always a gateway, in every system that I'm aware of, even at work, there is a gateway, just because you develop something, you're not always the person who's pushing it to production.
Exactly, or or not only that, but also when you're granted the rights to edit or build a page, you're only granted rights to edit and build that page, not, you're not have access to data that's, you know, in other areas of the same domain, so, you know, and I know Reddicker's a pretty big company, I can't imagine they wouldn't have those kinds of controls in there. You know, 'cause it'd be great to allow for our student, um, our student writers to have a blog. And and how much do we need to be cleansing our students' voices, shouldn't they be allowed to speak?
In terms of helping with this? We actually did that already. This uh the school, a a good chunk of the school website was created by uh the students, y- y- you may remember that, you may remember it, actually. Uh Mister Hennessy was teaching a class, and kids wi- with whatever they learned, they were putting together websites and all that. It's just that you don't have consistency, because you would go to one, there would be stars, you would go to another one, the color scheme would change. And if you want consistency, obviously, that's not the best thing, but.
Yeah, Reddicker will allow them to like play within the, a preset sort of a structure, you know, so that the framing all looks the same, it's just really allow allowing them to put content.
So that's, that's another conversation we can have, let's just see if we can. This is going wild, actually, it's pretty quick. So the school committee will assist assist in the development of a needs-based budget in collaboration with the leadership team. What do we mean by that, what actions would belong to us in that effort?
So this one came up because we didn't know we had a needs-based, like, we didn't know what type of a budget we had, right?
Right. So here's the other thing, the, remember, we're putting a set of goals. If this is gonna be a recurring goal, every year, the school committee will be, this is good as written. If we are saying that we, your comment is reminding me that if we're saying that we don't have a needs-based base budget, and we have to create the foundation of it together with uh members of the leadership team, then that's a one-shot thing, uh two two different approaches. I think either or is fine, but just to make sure we're on the same page.
So wouldn't action item number one be to determine what kind of a budget process we we have? Since that was the question that we didn't really know, like, I I assumed we did, and you came out and said you you had no idea.
Well, when when um Judy was here, I know that we started looking at uh bottom-up and needs-based. But, you know, the first time you do something, it can only go so far, and I know that they did whatever they could. They did not change everything, they did not start from scratch and say, hey, you know what, here, I'm just adding these things up, and it's it's making up the budget. I think now, I don't, I don't know um the uh the elementary school side that well, but I think Steven already started looking at his budget that way. Just from scratch, what are some of the things that we're putting on top of each other to create what we need? And that's the needs-based budget. So, but what what is, what are our actions as a school committee? Since we don't create that budget. We see the budget after it is created, we provide guidelines for the budget, we uh discuss the budget and approve the budget, but we don't.
Wouldn't action item number one be to understand how the budget was created? Um, exactly what type of budget we're talking about?
So would, that would be different than creating a document that explains the budget creation process. This is basically creating a document that explains a needs-based budget?
Or at least understanding what their process is when they put that that budget together.
Okay.
Are we looking at?
That's another discussion, you ended up having on the town meeting floors, what type of a budget was that
Yeah.
Put together, so maybe we can answer that question more succinctly.
Yep.
That would be in our benefit, right?
Yeah.
So the action would be to define um, define the budget creation process? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what we did on.
That feels really redundant.
Yeah.
Do we need anything else under number two, because number two feels like it is what it is?
Yeah, I just.
I hate saying it is what it is, but.
But there has to be some action to get there, right?
Well.
Yeah, maybe the the word assist is not
Yeah.
Helping us, because that is an action. We'll have, actually.
We don't drive the budget.
No.
Um, but, but it sounds like what I'm hearing from this conversation is we need to clarify the type of budget that gets created every year, is it a needs-based, is it a zero-based, is it how, you know, what, what is the definition of of the budget?
Okay.
Because, I mean, this is something that we continually come back to.
Right, so what I'm trying to get out of this, in a somewhat selfish way, something that is crisp enough that sounds like an action for us to say, okay, we're just gonna do that thing. But I also agree with Jen that when you say the school committee will assist in the development of something, it's already an action that, almost an action, uh somewhat blurry, but still seeming an action. So I was trying to remove that. Something like, we'll have a needs-based budget.
Um, we'll have a needs-based budget developed in collaboration with the leadership team, or we could even flip it and say something like, the school committee will work collaboratively with the leadership team and the development of a needs-based budget.
It still sounds like we're putting the budget together.
Um, the school committee will provide guidance, or will?
Establish guidelines?
Yeah.
I'm confused about um how the budget is formulated in the first place. Because if you think about it, I mean, we we, again, we come to this every March or April. It seems to start with a needs-based budget. You know, from each principal, right? And then it comes down to, well, then we start eliminating or decreasing or cutting. So how does that go from a needs-based? I mean, you need what you need, right, isn't this the question that we continually come up to every single year? You need what you need, so if you eliminate and you start cutting, it doesn't mean you need it any less.
That's more like a wants-based budget versus a needs-based.
Exactly, so. That's where my confusion comes in. So I'm not really sure what we're trying to um, what we're trying to do with this this particular sentence.
But what we, but but what we do do, what is in our purview, is to provide priorities for the budget. And where the school committee feels that the need is the greatest, we can probably provide that to the senior leadership team. And that's sort of a tangible document. You know, we've, every year when we establish our our goals and our, what we wanna do for the year, those should be accounted for in the budget process.
Right, while we are supposed to start the process by giving some budget goals to the administration anyway. And every year, if, when we said, for instance, uh wanna make sure that the class sizes remain small, or music program is is, you know, is something that we really want to have in our school district, or, you know, all that stuff. That allowed them to go back and say, this is something that the school committee asked us for. But on top of that, when it comes to expenditures, there's that needs-based approach to it. One is almost, you know, one side is what we, what we say from a, from an educational perspective, this is what we envision seeing, and this aligns with what we would like to see in the school district. But when they start putting it together, you know, they're asking, do I need ten notebooks, or would five be enough? Am I just overstocking here, or? Uh, you know, the the iPad minis minis that we had, which were aligning with a class that they were offering at the, you know, this year. So that kind of stuff, they always ask the question, is it needed, or is it good to have? Because you're good to have, would like to sit somewhere, uh create inventory for no good reason, but uh what are the needs, real needs of the district? I I I agree somewhat that, I'm not sure the way we wrote that um goal. It makes it clear as to what our role should be in that. What action we can participate in, so the only two things that I put in, create a document that explains a needs-based budget, which, you know, I personally would rather not create, and I would ask Adam to do. Um, among many other things, probably, you know, he will, he will see which one is a priority. And the second one was, if we're going to understand wha- how needs are changing, then we would do a review of year-over-year changes in the budget assumptions. So that you understand what changed, what what, what was needed last year that is not needed this this year, or vice versa. What do we need this year that we did not need last year? I think that's a major gap in the way budgets are put together, which, you know, I I look for. If some things change, the drivers of a budget change, it should be clear to those people who will review and approve a budget. We we changed the assumptions, we changed what we included in here, that's why you are seeing this higher number or lower number. Otherwise, we make circles, uh, you know, I have ten dollars this year, nine dollars next year. If I don't understand it, now we start questioning, are we hurting the education, are we cutting too much? So that clarity is needed, but I don't know what type of action actually belongs to us in that process. That's why I put that review meeting. So let's just pass for now, and then let's see if we can go back to it. Uh, the third section, the last section, is community relations. Uh, and I know that the community relations subcommittee is doing some good work on that. The two goals, were we all together when we came up with the six goals? We were, right, we were a full committee, so good. Uh, the first one is the school committee will create and and maintain a public relations plan for the school district. This is critical, and seems like a big piece. So how do we break it into actions?
And it also seems like we're we're going to need the full year for this.
We're gonna need a lot of stuff. He, let me put it this way, I completely agree with you that the the full goal will not be achieved uh in less than a year, let's say, let's just go with that. But doesn't mean that we cannot have some actions that are more short, mid, long-term, so that some things start coming together earlier. So from your conversations, Jen, what do you think would be something
So.
That belongs here?
So when we were thinking about this, we were thinking about it in the way of public relations sort of internally within the school community, and then externally with, and and that is outside of the school community into Granby and the surrounding towns. So we were thinking about creating, so create and maintain a public relations plan, so number one, it was a steering, we we need a steering committee created to kind of oversee those two branches of the um of the public relations. We went so far.
What is the steering committee for once, I'm sorry?
So the steering committee would basically be the people who can connect uh, connect public relations committees to the different folks that we need to be connected to, so we would like to invite someone from our uh select board. We would like to invite someone from our student body, you know, or a teacher, um, someone from senior leadership. Someone from, you know, maybe the athletics, anywhere we can go, someone even from the senior center. Um, to try and sort of get represented, representation of all the the different types of people that make up our town, basically. Um, you know, it, reach out to our local agricultural council and see how we can work together. Because we were also looking at the public relations plan as not just sort of promoting what's happening within the school, but to make really solid ties between the school and the students in the school and those in the community. So providing those opportunities, so the steering committee would basically oversee that. Um, and then within the school system, um establishing an alumni, which we've all talked about, an alumni or friends of the public schools. Um, which could, would also include things like an unofficial whisper network, which is just your army of retweeters and reposters on Facebook, you know, reaching out to our PTO and our, you know, the the families we are, who are already very involved. Who on our sports teams can start sharing their own pictures and their own stories about what's happening at our school, so that it isn't necessarily just coming from one central place. You know, we need, the thing with social media is you need to capitalize on the social aspect. And that means having sort of an unofficial network of re, I've been calling them reposters.
So those. So those being some of the more detailed actions that need to be taken, what would be? What would be the things, the actions that the school committee overall need will need to take?
So the school committee will need to um. We're gonna need someone on the steering committee from the school committee, we're gonna need to um. Also be the, we need someone from the school committee to be the official voice. Um for the social media, we need a point person on our committee to give us thumbs up and thumbs down. And what are we allowing and what are we not? That's another important thing. What um what are we going to allow? We need to establish rules and um.
So would it be something as simple as, which we've already started, um. Create a public relations committee?
Yeah, so that's so we said, you know, like the steering committee and then what they're they're sort of your your. Where everything's gonna roll up to and then under that, we have kind of the community relations people. And then we have the internal school system. Sort of feeding from our, um you know, there's a media arts class that the kids are taking now and. You know, how do we connect those kids in that class and that teacher to the people who are doing the website? How do we get those really great stories out to the sentinel? How do we, you know, just um formalizing the channels to the different uh media outlets?
So in addition to creating the public relations committee, it's also creating. A steering committee to include members of the community.
What does the public relations committee do? What what will the public relations committee do? What is, what do, what are you guys thinking about?
So those would be the people who um we would be looking for someone in the community who can write.
Uh press releases.
We're looking for people in the community who take nice pictures, that can put pictures up. So that's who the public relations committee is gonna be. And our journalism students, you know, we have seniors looking to get into. Writing and news reporting and working with G Cam.
So wouldn't it be something like create the public relations committee to adopt. A community relations plan uh process?
Say it again?
Uh help me, what did I just say? And create the community relations.
Committee.
Committee to adopt a community relations plan. And I forgot what I said after that.
I think it was, yeah.
Right, a pro- a process, a plan, a process to um. Market, you know, again, help me with the language, market.
So I'm confused, what will the steering committee do then? That's what that's what I'm trying to understand.
We'll we'll get to that. But let's start with the community relations plan because we already have a community relation subcommittee, right? And that seems like it falls right. Under the category of the school committee will create and maintain a public relations plan for the school district. An action, an action for that is creating the public relations committee.
Isn't it the same thing as community relations subcommittee? Alright, so we already have that.
Exactly, but that still is a goal that I st- I think needs to be under because. Just you guys have only met, what, three times? So and we all have agreed that this is something that's gonna take longer than this school year.
Okay, that's good.
And their action is to create some sort of process to communicate. Communicate uh communicate communicate to. Granby residents and um surrounding towns. Uh market the, you know, market the 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 schools and. And then the the other action that comes from the public relations committee is the creation of this um. Steering committee, right?
Yeah, the idea behind the steering committee is that by including sort of other members of the community. Basically, it's sort of a larger community relations plan for the whole town, right? So basically, you're gonna have sort of this bigger committee that is not just the schools, but the schools is the main voice. But to provide, to to kind of work together and promoting other things going on in town, cause it's, the idea is. Strengthening that partnership and so by promoting things that are going on in town and the kids promoting those other things. Then those people are more likely to return the favor. So that's the idea of the steering committee, why that's a little bit different than the school public relations. You know, where we're gonna write our own press releases, we're gonna have our own way of promoting our schools. But we should also have a larger committee um that sort of encompasses all of the all of Granby.
So so we're saying that we're gonna have a commu- community relations plan or roadmap, whatever it is. By when would that be created?
By the end of December, I'd say.
We have pretty high ambitions for the end of December.
You can put me in there. I don't wanna volunteer Jen. Yeah, 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 that's true, but it should be us, I mean, it's our subcommittee. The gems.
Are you the chair? Is she the chair?
Oh, I'm the chair, yeah.
Alright, so create a steering committee, so now what 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 will that that is basically, what will they steer?
So this is. I'm I, this is kind of a spin off of the go Granby meetings that we were having. Right, we were talking even then about the need for marketing the town, right? And it all ties into improving the economics of Granby. And I think that this is a good way to start doing that and having those conversations, there's a lot going on in town. That people should know about and our schools is kind of should should become that, kind of that heartbeat of the town a little bit more. You know, people wanna be involved and I think where they're financially invested now with the new school and. Just feel like we have a good opportunity right now to to link them, so how are we gonna do this? The steering committee, we have, we'll have to find people willing to volunteer, um so create the committee. Um I see them, you know, meeting at least quarterly. And they they should be providing the um. The sort of overarching theme, I guess, of how we're gonna do this together, you know, and come up with that plan.
So and that that plan is not gonna overlap with the plan that we have on that second row? That the community relations subcommittee will put together?
I'm sure there will be overlap. I mean, it's because it's the, we have a community relations committee for the school, just our school and every little thing that happens here. And then we have sort of a seat at the table of a larger steering committee in the town.
If I'm wrong, the steering committee, so this is where it's gonna be telling, because the steering committee sounds like it's much bigger than the school district. But it's sitting on our goals. To create one and we can't do that without.
We can't.
We can do our, we can.
All we can do is try.
Right, okay, but. So I think we have to be careful of how we we state that.
And I guess I misunderstood from last night because I thought the steering committee was more. Designed to carry out certain tasks. That are assigned as far as, you know, who's gonna be doing the school website, who might maintain that? Who might be in charge of um working with local papers to. You know, promote promote good things that are happening in in the schools and.
That's our school, so that's like our main one, so this this other idea of having this larger steering committee. Right now is a really nice idea, you know, how much we can control it, I don't know, I think it's worth exploring. But as far as the, just for the schools, yes, community relations subcommittee, which would have. You know, a member from the school committee, whoever we can get from the school system, obviously, someone from senior leadership. You know, um love to get student representation on there and to kind of also use it as a teaching. Thing for teaching kids how to write press releases and how to write stories and put them online and. They are already doing interviews, they're already working with G Cam on stuff. So that's the the community relations subcommittee for the school, yes.
Can we, uh would it make sense then if we took that? Steering committee and moved it into the second goal, which is more about the community outreach?
The steering committee where?
And move it into the second goal, which is more about the community outreach and being a good business partner with the other town groups.
The the purpose of the steering committee would slightly change, is that what we're saying?
Well, no, I think the purpose of the steering committee. Her eyes has always been a bigger than school district thing, it's been a more of a town town thing. So in in my opinion, it fits naturally better under number two than it does under number one. Or it says the school committee will work cooperatively, communicate clearly and effectively, and commit to improving relationships with other branches of municipal government.
I see number two is more about.
Or is that more about town going?
Alright, so let's just try the second one. The school committee will work cooperatively, communicate clearly and effectively, and commit to improving relationships with other branches of municipal government. How are we gonna do that?
Well, we talked about um meeting monthly. With um. Fincom, select board.
Uh monthly?
Quarterly?
Well, I'm asking whether or not that's the desire, if that's the thing I was, I was gonna say that that may be a little too ambitious. But quarterly is, I think, what we agreed to.
Well, that seems like a pretty reasonable action step.
Okay, what else?
I think we should also include something about um that we will um respond to. Um inquiries or. Emails and phone calls from other government town officials. Within X amount of days or within a timely fashion or something like that. So we're setting up our own actions and our own standards? Or is that too detailed?
Well, um we actually can look into the possibility of having liaisons from. Our committee or other committees into our committee.
So it. So it's just someone from our, from the school committee and going to one of their meetings, basically?
The challenge with that is with our schedule, it's always the same time. Uh Cheryl was saying that in um some other towns, they have a select board liaison into the school committee. Not a voting member, but you know, they show up at their meetings every so often and. Um that that creates that direct connection. We can offer that too. So what is, what what would be an action with for that?
So we would be inviting them to.
Initiate, initiate.
Initiate a liaison.
Initiate conversations.
Well, are we, are we creating that liaison?
Well, it's, I don't know, I mean, I I think I think we need to maybe have discussions with. Select board and Fincom with how, you know, how they feel about liaisons.
Maybe we can just say create a liaison role and then. Also, in the previous goal. Would it be with something like meeting, having. Two meetings per year, for instance, open to the public that. We hold somewhere that is a little more. Uh conducive to conversation than this, I mean, just we'll basically stand and. Walk around mingle and talk to folks, maybe we find a way to pull them here as opposed to come to our meeting and we're gonna, you know, we can hear from you.
Just like open up the gym.
Yeah, open up the gym and then people come in.
Some small, like little. To use the word refreshments with something small like that.
Should we put something like that?
Yeah, I like that idea. Even if we did it once a year. That'd be great.
So initiate. Community event. For the school committee. To do what?
So this is, this is to work with just other branches of.
I think we reversed and went back.
Well, this is for the community and then the same thing, you're absolutely right, I was thinking that we can do the same thing. And in fact, years ago, wasn't, didn't we try to have something like that? Let's just not only the s- uh select board or uh Fincom, but let's just invite everybody once.
Well, this, I'm just looking at this, it specifically says, the school committee will work cooperatively, communicate clearly and effectively. And commit to improving relationships with other branches of municipal government.
Right, that's a goal. It's an action that will get us there.
The action, community event, you're saying fits under there?
No, it it does not, a a community event is for the community, if we're talking about this specifically, we're talking about creating an event. For other members of of government, you know, maybe having twice a year. Um if we did coffee and cookies and we invited the s- select board and Fincom and the planning board. And the bylaws committee and. Um you know, the fire department, that's what I thought you meant, because that's what it says. Trying to improve relationships with other branches of municipal government.
That that sounds all good, so what is the action?
Well, that is, that's what I'm saying, twice a year.
Yeah, that community event, Emily, that you just typed. Under the number, I think that Deanne is saying fits under the number two goal.
Yeah, this, I think we said the same thing, but I really, I still think that the same thing belongs on the community as well. I mean, it's good that we're gonna be communicating with the town, but I would like to hear from the public as well in a more informal setting.
So you can copy that and put it on there.
We'll benefit from the beauty. We'll benefit from the beauty of copy paste. For town.
That's right.
This is twice a year, is it?
I kinda think this is a nice annual event. I don't think that we're gonna get, everyone will come out more than once a year for this. I mean, already it would kinda have to be before, you know, like a big town meeting or something anyway.
That might be the time to do it.
Yeah, right before.
It's right before some annual town meeting and.
Have it in the cafeteria somewhere and. Everyone come in, have all your conversations, get all your questions answered, and then you go in a town meeting and you're ready to vote. Yeah, 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 the big town meeting, annual town meeting.
Well, that sounds a little different though, I mean, this is, I thought this was just an effort to try and. Not necessarily, just, just to improve relationships.
Yeah, too, but it would be good to, you know, have that time right before a meeting where we're having these big votes for people. To schmooze and ask us questions and, you know. I just don't think we'll get a lot of people to come out just for this purpose. I think that if it's, you know, e- maybe that's not the right event, maybe it's, there's another one, but. I also think we should have a charter date time. For all of the elected officials.
So just, you know, some of these things will, will look a little fluffy, so we'll get back to it. And see how we can.
We'd need to be near the beer can.
Okay. This is our second night in a row, I know that. We're all so little. I am. Tired probably. So what, what we have right now is good, or do you wanna continue the conversation?
I think, I think we'd like, I'd like to read it and then.
Okay, let's just.
Talk about it in a week or two, maybe our next meeting, just to make sure or see if we wanna make any changes. Right now.
I don't give Jen an opportunity to see it too.
Good? Everybody?
I'm good.
So this is a Google Doc, so it's already in the drive with the updates. Just in case, I will save it as a, as a Word document as well, as a backup. But I think. I think we're all good. Anything else? Alright, so our next meeting is on the nineteenth. Alright, and we have uh, subcommittee meetings probably, uh, by then. We have to find out when our budget subcommittee meeting will be, your community relations. Uh, just a reminder, we post those meetings as well. And um, even though we don't have a quorum, and the, the idea of not having a quorum is that the decisions made are not binding for the full committee. Uh, but we post those. Anything else? Alright, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Thank you.